Okay, good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 28th, 2022 to order. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session to discuss two items. First, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. And the Chair is to determine that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. And second, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 216, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Only comment is we will be returning to open session no later than 6:30. Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 28th, 2022 back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session. We talked about collective bargaining and negotiation position of a public body related to purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. No decisions were made. And now I would ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Will not skip public comment and announcement this week. Anyone for public comment and announcement?
Carol Capola, Finance Director. I just wanted to let the Board know and the public know that the information that was requested with regard to tax liens is now on the Treasurer Collector's website. That is as of today, which was the last day of February. And it will be there between the last day of each month or the following next couple of days moving forward.
Great, thank you, Carol.
Good evening, I'm Pete Claus from Jay Groonies. You probably know why I'm here, but I just wanted to make a statement and get it on the public record, okay?
Is it related to the, is it related to the agenda item tonight related to Doc Side?
Yes.
Okay, you just have to wait for that to make the comment because it's an agenda item, so we will discuss it.
Okay, my other comment was just about last year. I just wanted to say how great it was dealing with the town. That's really my first statement.
Excellent.
Joe Powers, the Board of Health, the Harwich people, they were all just great to work with. And I'm just so proud to say that, you know, I'm working with the town of Harwich and going on with whatever their decision is going to be.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Joe, do you have the memo on Department of Public Utilities Notice of Filing? Briefly announce that if there's any public input that can be given on that.
So this would be the Notice of Filing, Public Hearings and Procedural Conference related to Department of Public Utilities Petition of NSTAR, correct?
Yes.
So NSTAR Electric Company doing business as ever source is seeking approval for a general increase in base distribution rates for electric service and a performance-based rate-making plan. So the notice that all municipalities received is that NSTAR is looking for rate increases effective December 1st, 2022. So within the notice, they indicate through Department of Public Utilities that there is an opportunity for the public to be heard. And their notice indicates, again, this was dated January 28th, so some elements of it may have changed. But the Department of Public Utilities will conduct two virtual public hearings to receive comments on NSTAR's petition. The department will conduct the two public hearings using Zoom video conferencing. The first one is March 29th, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And the second is March 31st, 2022, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Attendees can join the March 29th hearing at 10:00 a.m. by entering the link that's in the notice, so we'll have that put out. And different link for the event on March 31st. And then it says additionally, if you anticipate providing comments via either public hearing, that you are directed to send an email to marktassone, that's M-A-R-C dot T-A-S-S-O-N-E at mass.gov, and provide any comments. And that would be by March 28th, 2022. And then last, they indicate that, that any person may submit written comments that would be by mail by the close of business on April 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Joe. And that letter is in our packet. Comments from the Board, Larry?
None.
Another, I was saying, Chris, I can't hear anyone.
Mary?
Nothing.
Don. Okay, next up, we have a presentation by the Treasure Chest Committee.
Good evening. My name's Ellie Gerson. I'm the co-chair of the Treasure Chest Committee. And I want to thank you for, on behalf of our committee, for welcoming us here tonight. We have come in response to your concerns. And we are, I'm going to identify three of your concerns right now and talk about how we'll approach them. Your first concern that the, our committee was not fully appointed. And we've taken care of that. We're now fully appointed. The second was that we meet more regularly. And we have been meeting monthly since October and continue to meet as often as we need on a regular basis to fulfill our needs. And the third is to update our guidelines. And in your packet, you received the list of the guidelines. And I want to try to highlight just two of them tonight and then go on to talk about how it's going to help us with reopening. So the two, is there any way you can put that up? The guidelines are?
Jamie will handle the slides for you.
Okay. Do you know what slide it's on? Yep, yep. So the bottom one, and I'm not going to go over all of them because they're in your packet. And I think it's, you know, good for you to read them at your leisure. The bottom one on the screen right now says that each three-hour shift, either nine to 12 or 12 to 3, will have an inside and outside shift leader that will provide leadership for all the volunteers. So this was an area we thought we, you know, had covered to some extent while we were open, but realized that it needed to be highlighted and reinforced, that that leadership was there on site. And the need arose that a problem could be addressed right away and taken, as it should. And so the next slide shows the other one I wanted to highlight, that the shift leaders will ensure that a volunteer is at the entrance during hours of operation. This was something we implemented when the stickers were first being used. And we realized we couldn't keep track of cars coming in. You know, as they pulled into a parking spot, whether they had a sticker or not. So we assigned somebody to the gate. And on hourly shifts, we'd have people standing there saying, waving people in or telling them to go away if they didn't have a sticker. So that's a really important role for a volunteer to play. And we want to make sure that it continues to be well addressed. So with that, I just want to say that we intend to continue to operate like a true committee. We want to communicate better with you and with all members of the community. We're open to suggestions. And we just want to model the respect that needs to go on with clients, with volunteers, with the public.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Great information in the packet. We'll open up the questions from the Board. And Larry, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Ellie.
You're welcome.
We, as you said, we have a lot of information in the packet. The committee has been working really hard during the monthly meetings they've had, reviewing what the policies were in the past and what they could do to strengthen some of the issues of respect for the clients and handling the goods. They've committed to continue that, that action so that the volunteers know what their positions are. And I'm very impressed. This discussion is the opening informational flow. The intent of the committee is bring this back in a short time, asking for a decision whether they can move ahead or not. At the present, I think the hope is that we can reopen that by May 1 and get going and have it, they've, and Link is on board now to make that happen, to make that go forward. I think some of the issues in the past, I look at traffic. I think that's controlled by the actions they've taken. I'm just impressed with all the work they've done on it. And leave it up to the rest of you to ask questions.
Thank you, Larry. Julie?
Oh, there was great information in the packet, so thank you for that. The only question I have, and I just didn't recall. Oh, thank you. I don't recall, is there a sticker cost to residents? Or are they, you want to address that, Larry?
Last year, when they, when they came before us, they requested, there's a sticker cost. They, the committee at that time requested that we charge a $5 fee, I think it was, for stickers. We, as a board, rejected that. I know I was on the rejection side thinking that these are oftentimes directed towards those that need financial aid, so it didn't seem proper to charge them for the sticker. The committee actually, Ellie didn't mention it, but their internal vote was again to ask for a $5 fee, thinking that that's not much and at least we cover the cost to be, to monitor the Harwich-only restrictions on them. That will be, that will come back certainly on your, when we make a decision. And I think it'll be up to us again to decide whether we support that or not, that request.
Thank you. Good point. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Mary?
Great, great information throughout that packet, so thank you for your efforts. The only question I had, and I'm familiar with this challenge, is how you're going to, it's the bottom of your slide there, that patrons will have the first option to take donated items. How are you going to manage that? That gets very dicey.
It's not easy. But we try our best to get those items out there on the tables, on the racks, and that they're out there for the patrons. And then as the shift winds down, you know, it's time for us to clean up. And that's, that's when, you know, we look to see what needs to be put where.
Okay, so that's the plan, is the volunteers can't take things when they arrive at 9:00. They can take something when they leave at noon.
At their end of their shift.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stand right up if you want. Just say your name for the record.
Eric Foley, Clerk of the Treasure Chest, Selectman at Caskill, members of the Select Board. Yes, patrons will always have first choice of items. Typically, when we are emptying items out of vehicles and bringing them in, they go out onto the rack, they're closed. Other items are going out on the tables for the clientele to pick up. So it's not like somebody's immediately going through stuff and grabbing stuff for themselves. That's not the intent. The way this is currently written, the guidelines, is volunteers do have an opportunity to take a few items during the course of their shift. Certainly, they need to go to, out there for patrons first. The example I always use is, okay, I take a box out of a car as a volunteer. I put it out onto the table. Patrons, clientele, they go through that box. They put everything out on the table, they've gone through it. Maybe I walk by it 15 minutes later and I see a brass garden hose, you know, whatever. And I'm like, oh, that's something I could use. Well, folks have had an opportunity to look at it and go buy it. You know, I see it during the course of my activities. You know, I can use that for my own home. You know, I might take that. Certainly making it, certainly offering it to the patrons, the clientele first. You know, certainly folks aren't taking things immediately to resell or do whatever. That's not happening. But I, that is the way it worked before we were shut down by the Board of Health, you know, due to COVID. It worked well. We didn't have anybody, you know, taking many items at all. But, you know, if I have one of the women working up front and they see that blouse they might like and they put it out and nobody's grabbed it in a half an hour, you know, they might decide they might like that blouse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, anything further?
No, I'm all set. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With due respect, Eric, I personally have been pulling for this organization to come back and be run, but it wasn't working well. And a couple of things that you have to make sure, I want to be able to put them out there to make sure that the public understands. There's two central problems, and they were organizational, which led to operational problems. One is you can't run committees with just one person making decisions for you. I'm not suggesting that's not what's, that's what's going on now, but it did at one point. The other one is, in the hierarchy of things, the volunteers that come there are subject to the rules and the policies that you folks establish. You don't work for them. They work through you because you are the agents of the town, not them. It's really important everybody understands that organizational structure because when rules are promulgated, everybody's got to understand them and they got to buy into them.
To that, at the very end of the guidelines, you will see the acknowledgement that every volunteer needs to read it and sign it. And if they don't follow the guidelines and don't follow the rules of etiquette, you know, there's a process in place whereby they can be dismissed. They can lose their privilege to be a volunteer. What you said also about not one person can carry the committee. You know, since we've reformulated the committee, you know, Ellie's a new member of the committee. She's the vice chair. Noella Morrison, another new committee member, is the Chair. Another new committee member is Maureen Davis. Maureen just took it upon herself to go out and find a shed where volunteers can stay while they need to mandate gate to check stickers. I have never seen a more active, cohesive group that all wants to contribute together. So that is very important. What you stated is not one person can, you know, carry it all. And that's certainly not the way we're trying to set it up. We'll have shift supervisors. Those shift supervisors will answer to the Chair, BIM. You know, so the buck stops with Noella, who likes to be called BIM. So the buck stops with her. She's well aware of that and she's ready to be that enforcer. What's great about this committee is everybody has a part to play and they play it. And that, knowing committees, that's important. That's rare. And I'm trying to nurture it and make sure that continues.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the reason I put it out there is because there's a larger audience than just in this room.
I understand that.
And I want the volunteers to get it too. Because I, there's almost no other committee that I can think of that has another subordinate element to it, that has a bunch of volunteers that work through a volunteer board. It's super important that they all understand that, okay, he may be a shift manager, but here are the rules and the rules get set by you folks because we appoint you to do that. And that's how this control is going to work. Because I think that this is going to work out. I mean, I really, I'm pulling for it. But it can only work out if everybody understands what their roles are and that a shift manager doesn't own the Treasure Chest for four hours.
No, they do not. But I can tell you this too. We've, since we have gone Harwich-only, I've seen a tremendous improvement. So definitely on the, that was the right move to make. Some of the volunteers that we've had issue with are no longer going to be volunteers. They've chosen not to volunteer. I look at the volunteers who currently have indicated they would come back to volunteer. They're the ones you want. I really, truly believe that this can happen, that there'll be the respect that the patrons deserve. We won't have the issues that we've had in the past. You know, we resolved a number and we continue to try to do better. I mean, that's all we can do. But everybody realizes that, hey, we represent the town of Harwich. We are the face of Harwich at the Treasure Chest. And people need to understand that and respect that and abide by that. And without that, this doesn't happen. Because if those complaints or whatever gets back to the Selectman or Link, then there is no more Treasure Chest. And we're quite clear on that. And we have taken it upon ourselves, we will meet monthly. We will meet more if we need to, to make sure that things are being enforced and that the citizens and the Select Board and the town are happy with the Treasure Chest operations. And we're going to do all we can to commit to that and make that happen.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Joe, anything on the subject? Have you talked to the Department head about where he's at?
Not recently. We had spoken several months ago about this matter. So this is the first I'm hearing that he's on, on board with this proposal. But if I could ask one question, just looking at what's on the screen there, to the bullet point that's been talked about. The patrons will have first option to take donated items. And just going through the history of operational guidelines, it seems that it was always a prohibition on volunteers taking items during the shift. Does that change that? Can volunteers take items during the shift?
I don't know if it was ever truly a prohibition. When I checked with the last person who was running the Treasure Chest, she had indicated that the current structure that we provided you this evening was the structure. I know in the past, it was okay for Treasure Chest members, maybe before, you know, I think the last set of guidelines before, the guidelines that you had before you this evening were from 2018, I think, previous to that. I know that there was no prohibition on volunteers taking items. All I can say to you is this is the structure that we were told was in place when the Treasure Chest, you know, closed down in March of 2020.
Joe?
Yeah, so I, you know, the reason for my question is the Treasure Chest operational guidelines that are dated, that indicate were approved by the Board of Selectmen February 26, 2018. Guideline number 11 says volunteers shall use discretion in taking a limited number of donated items and shall do so only at the end of their shift. So to me, that makes it clear that, no, you can't take it during a shift. Your shift has to be over. And I noticed, I think the original committee charge talked about that volunteers wouldn't be allowed to take it. My, the reason for my question is, and I've, and I've heard the discussion before about, you know, folks that have to rely on this. And I, and I recognize and understand that many folks have to rely on, or are able to rely on this, and it fills a need for them. Any number of us that have been volunteers in the past, a volunteer is someone that's willing to donate their time so that others can get the benefit of it. And this bullet point strikes me that a volunteer on the committee, if a patron doesn't show up at 9:00 a.m. and it's been first, first allowed for the patrons, does a staff member take it at 10:00 a.m.? And the resident that could have availed themselves and had benefited from that item, show up at 10:01, are they out of luck? So for me, if this is what we're talking about, the benefit should be to the patrons. And with all due respect to volunteers, we, all of our committees, or most of our committees are run by volunteers and we need them. But you're giving for the greater good. That bullet point, to me, is problematic going forward. And I think we're just going to find ourselves back where we were before.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few of you actually went through an interview with Larry and I. I just want to make absolutely certain that I repeat what was said during that interview, that you're advisory to the Board of Selectmen and that you don't have the right individually, as a committee, to establish rules without the consent of the Board of Selectmen. I think that's what Joe is basically saying here, is that there were rules. And anything that's changed to those rules, we'd have to adopt and accept. So I tend to agree with Joe. I mean, the scenario you were discussing, Eric, somebody could drop something off at 9:30 and if you're not, and somebody can only get there during lunchtime, it's already gone. And so it seems, I don't want to close out the opportunity for the people who are working there because they work hard. It would be unfair to make them less a citizen than everybody else if they had a need for something. But the end of the shift sounds fairly reasonable so that you don't wind up having some arbitrary, you know, stopwatch kind of operation.
No, and I can appreciate that. As I had said, this was the structure that was provided to us by the previous woman who ran the Treasure Chest. And she provided documentation that that's how that took place.
And that's why you're here tonight and she's not.
Thank you, Don. Larry?
Well, thank you. I think, I don't know, Mike, we haven't commented yet, but again, the purpose tonight was to get input so we could, the committee can take the input back and consider the questions that Joe had and Don and come back shortly as we move forward. So that was the purpose of this.
I think you did pretty good. There was only one thing people.
Is that a spare copy?
That's pretty good.
Oh, that's.
We do have to vote, we will have to vote the new operational guideline so next time you come back. The only question I had, other than I share the concern of the town administrator, May 1st to what? When is it, when is it closing?
We had a year-round operation before we anticipating it be year-round.
More than likely, I won't support year-round. And I'll just be upfront about that until we find a location that doesn't conflict either for you or for the Building Maintenance Department, one of the two. We don't have it on the agenda tonight, but our capital plan four years from now shows a $3.7 million building for the Building Maintenance Department. That I won't vote for either, especially since we have a building. So we should all look towards where we can operate if we ever need that building. And then if it's going to be shared, which was part of the last discussion, how we're going to share it, which I think everyone's open to that conversation.
We did do a site walkthrough tonight of the facility. And while right now it's being used for storage of municipal vehicles, all of the staging that we would need to operate, the tables, the racks, and all of that is still all there. And certainly, we could accommodate a different schedule, one that might be more favored.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Yeah, when we get to it. I'd say I'd finally leave you with, when I look at how inflation has affected so many and everybody is looking for a way to make ends meet or try to, you know, get a little help. The Treasure Chest is such an opportunity to those folks. If they can save on something, they can spend it on something else. And in times like these, it's needed more than ever. So again, I want to thank you much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Meeting Special Permit Fees, Monday, February 28th, 2022. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Monday, February 28th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 p.m. during their regularly scheduled meeting. This hearing will be held for the purpose of reviewing and implementing fees for special permits such as one-day liquor and entertainment permits, craft fairs, and road races. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend either in person or remotely. Dial-in information will be on the posted agenda. Board of Selectmen meeting will be held in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich. Signed, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, and it was in the Cape Cod Chronicle, February 10th, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Yeah, I'm hoping I can perfect this with a motion to open it. It isn't a meeting, it's a hearing. So I move that we open the public hearing.
As read by Mary.
As read by Mary.
With the exchange of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I second that?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
So this came up because our office licensed guru, I don't know Danielle's title, sorry.
Executive Assistant for Licensing.
Executive Assistant for Licensing is cleaning up some of our applications. So through all of the processes with liquor licenses and entertainment licenses, the application for a special permit, the only thing that the town of Harwich had voted for charges was a $25 one-day entertainment license. So Danielle did work with surrounding towns, Chatham, Orleans, got theirs and then changed our form, which we will have in the packet next week. We didn't get it into the packet this week. But the rates mirror Orleans' rates and I will read them to you. One-day entertainment license, $25. One-day liquor license, all alcohol, $50. One-day liquor license, wines and malt, $50. Craft fair, $50. Event, $25. Road race, $50. And then she changed the entire form to check appropriate boxes instead of the very basic one that we have. With that, I will open it up. Anyone in the public have any questions, comments about these fees and the changes in the application? Anyone online? Say no one, can I get a motion to close?
I move we close the public hearing and continue discussion.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. For discussion, Don?
No, I think you did a wonderful job. It's a clear form and it's fair prices, so. Thank, thank you for her efforts.
I agree with Don. Well done.
Julie?
I think it's great. I just have one question. So what's the difference between a one-day liquor license, all alcohol, and a one-day liquor license, wines and malt? I mean, I know beer and wine, but if you're going to do either way, it's all the same fee.
Joe?
So I think it ties back to the ABCC applications for a one day. And where they differentiate, we'd want a match.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks. I don't have anything else.
And if it's not a not-for-profit, can they get a liquor license, all alcohol? Or are those only available for not-for-profits?
My understanding is the one days are only available for not-for-profits.
For all alcohol?
Yep.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay.
Larry?
I think maybe you've answered my question. I see that Chatham, for instance, waived some of the fees for nonprofits. And we do not, is that, I'm okay with that. I just want to be sure that's where we're going.
You want my comment?
Anyone's comment.
I normally vote no when we waive fees because there is a certain cost to go along with this. And I think we should capture our cost at very least. Mary?
As a nonprofit, I was here getting fees waived. But certainly, certainly that's a reasonable fee. I think most nonprofits could afford that.
Don?
What she said.
Julie?
Oh, nothing else.
Anything else from the board? Can I get a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the special permit fees.
In the new form.
As presented.
In the new form.
In the new form.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Yeah, again, my point, I just wanted to be sure we discussed it.
Weekly discussion, I added this. And now until the end of budget season, we will have weekly discussion on budget. As you all know, we were presented with the budget last week when the town administrator was away. Julie, could you hold the book up? There's a lot in there. So I asked Carol, Finance Director, to simplify it a little bit for us and show us what our budget drivers were. And Carol, would you come up and just go through the memo with the board, please?
Good evening. I know that the proposed budget is a lot to digest. And certainly, you know, we have a different view on how to present it than perhaps somebody that is in your position and in the public's position. So I've made an attempt here to give you a broad overview of your operating budget and then the budgets for the two enterprise funds as well. And that would be water and wastewater enterprise funds. And so I provided a list of major increases and decreases that have impacted your operating budget. Those include increased debt. And that debt is to support wastewater. It includes assessments from Montemoy Regional School District that have increased. It includes assessment from Cape Cod Regional Technical High School that has increased. And the increase is due to an enrollment increase in the current year of 20 students. We have health insurance that is coming in at a 3% increase for all of your health plans. Porterville County retirement increases up over 8% this year, the upcoming year. And that is significant as well. Our IT services currently are contracted. We realize we need support in that department. We don't just need an IT director. We also need further support in order to be able to provide some goals, some goals that each department may have to be more effective and efficient in their operations. The budget includes three police cruisers. In the current fiscal year, FY '22, zero were budgeted. And in the prior year, I believe it was one that was budgeted. They did lose a cruiser in that year, it was totaled. So they did replace two in FY '21. However, there was only one budgeted, again. And then, and then, so for them to catch up, they've proposed three vehicles. We have increases in personnel wages and those are really associated with step increases that are part of your contracts. Also longevity, that's also part of your contracts. There's no increases here for the four folks that are contracted directly with the board. There's no wage increase for those folks. But the remainder, if there's a contract in place and that contract supports step increases or increases in longevity payments, then that is included. The proposed budget includes three new positions. One is a cultural center director. The other is a housing advocate employee. And the other is a council on aging program specialist, too, to support that operation. There is an expanded nutrition program for the council on aging that has been supported. This year, the part-term, part-time health inspector's position was approved at a full-time position. However, the proposed budget originally didn't support that. So we've added those wages in there as well. Your, the town's insurer, who is Maya for property and liability insurance, has told us to plan on a significant increase. And that increase is also budgeted in the proposed budget. As you are aware, we call it the great retirement, I guess. And so I'm not calling it the great resignation. I'm calling it the great retirement. We have a number of folks that are planning to retire. And with those retirements, we have vacation and sick leave payouts. And we have just learned today of another individual that will need to address as you adjust your budgets. The assessing office outsources its valuation of properties to PK Associates. This year, in this current fiscal year, it was the year for us to prepare an RFP for three years and to bring that out to bid. Those numbers came in significantly higher than the previous contract. And so that is being budgeted for in the proposed budget. The town clerk has numerous elections which are increasing that budget. The town administrator is supporting safety and training for public service. And then, this budget does not include a transfer to support your wastewater operating budget. In the current year, you supported that with free cash. I'm not sure how you would like to support that moving forward. What was certified as retained earnings back in August is about $250,000. So that is available. The current budget in that, for that enterprise fund is over $500,000. As you know, flow hasn't started with Chatham and most of that money hasn't been spent. So you're going to have pretty significant retained earnings as well. So just so that you're not nervous if you chose to use, you know, a portion or most of that, the current retained earnings of 250 to support that budget. The budget, the operating budget, not debt, the operating budget is, I think, $537,000. That's proposed for FY '23. And then finally, I wanted to list for you what perhaps you might want to use free cash for. The general fund operating budget, it does not propose to use any free cash. But however, your capital budget does. So we're starting with a balance of $3,076,200 in free cash. That's a result of that free cash being set back in August. And then we had a fall town meeting, special town meeting, in which you used a large sum of those funds, 3.3 million, I think, to be exact. So we have a draft capital budget that's supporting the use of almost $2.3 million in free cash. In addition to that, you have some other standard items. The town of Harwich typically funds overages in snow and ice with free cash to promote the town of Harwich. With the Chamber of Commerce is typically supported that way as well. The other libraries in Harwich, the cultural council. You may have some prior year bills, I believe we know of two right now. And then if you chose to fund any of it with your wastewater operating budget. Typically and historically, you've also funded stabilization and OPEB. But this, based on the choices that you will make, I was not able to fill those out here. I'm happy to address any questions that you wish. I think it's important for you to know and for the public to know that this budget does not include any increases for COLA for any personnel. So if we estimated those, and those aren't just cost of living because the board may negotiate other benefits for these folks. It could be something, just giving you an example of, you know, and perhaps an increase for educational incentives or something of that nature. So my recommendation is the board consider a number of about $750,000 that would need to be funded in order to support COLAS.
Thank you, Carol. Start with, Joe, do you want to add anything before we go to the board members?
I do. I want to praise Carol. Meaning, Selectmen Kavanaugh showed the current binder, which is about this thick. And we know that in past years, Carol has done a binder, you know, about yay thick, if you can. So for Carol to be able to take those numbers from two inches thick to one page just is a testament to how well she knows the numbers and the budget. And I appreciate the way that she's presented it tonight because it's accurate and it just puts in a very concise manner where we're at. So you can see within the major increases where the priorities are that were in my draft budget to you folks. Some of the other headwinds that we've talked about before and the insurances and the assessments. This is just, it's a phenomenal document, even though it's a single page with two sides of information. So again, that's a testament to Carol's abilities and Carol's knowledge of our budget. It gives you all useful information to now start making tough decisions.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't, and I echo what Joe just said. You do tremendous work. And this is even better than usual because it's something that's probing enough that the public can understand. That being said, because it's in our packet, I just want to make sure, I reiterate what I believe you said. The sentence you have is, "Other significant considerations include," and I believe that the public needs to hear, "Though not included in these figures, other considerations include." Because we're already at 4.47% change on the general fund, absent making any union contracts whatsoever. So if there are costs built into that, that's an addition to the fact that we're already way past 2.5%.
Any response, Carol, or just?
I have no response. I will tell you that in that budget book, which I neglected to add to my summary, we do estimate at the end of the day a tax rate, a residential tax rate for average and medium residential, single-family homes. And that is, would be an increase with regard to this budget in going from 8.11 to 8.50. And that's important for the board to know, I think. And I don't believe that we provided that kind of information before. And I wanted to make sure that you had it this evening.
Thank you, Carol. Mary?
No. Excellent job. I wish I had a magic wand because that's a whole lot, a whole lot of money and we were hoping to stay even. But I don't look at it quickly and see anything I want to give up on. I did push back on Montemoy. I'd like to see their number come down. But right off the bat, I don't have any place to push.
Julie?
No, I would say the same, that this overview is fantastic because, you know, and this is better than, but still, that this is a great overview. And other than that, I agree. I haven't figured out where I would be comfortable cut, so.
Larry?
Thank you, Carol. Obviously, a very good job. Does the Montemoy number, does that include the potential for a new agreement or not?
This is the old, your standard.
So there's a chance that could be reduced if we.
That is correct.
And that would help us if, because otherwise, we're, we have some heavy lifting, don't we? We have to, the budget is balanced now, but it would not be if we include, when we do the COLAS and we get wherever that is. I was interested that.
Larry, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah.
Joe, will you give us your thoughts on Larry's question? Because it's my understanding that no matter what happens at this town meeting because of timing, it's not going to happen this year, any change in the agreement with the elementary school. Am I wrong?
You're not wrong. What we're dealing with, with council right now is the draft article that the Montemoy School District has sent over. It is an article that contemplates, well, sorry, let me back up for a moment. As Carol has said, and the way that I refer to it is, our current assessment are the numbers that we're working on with this budget. This assumes no change in the agreement or anything like that. And to me, that's the appropriate way to go. So I think based on that, the school department and the administration crafted a draft article that talks about the current assessment and the machinations that have to happen in both towns so that the dollar amount would then be a lower amount. That's still being vetted by council as to applicability and allowability. And we'd have to figure out the motions that go with that. But that is the intent going forward of the school district is to provide articles in both towns that could accomplish the new assessment if both towns approve it.
But it'd be a huge mistake for this board to go into this budget process thinking it's going to get that new formula.
I would wholeheartedly agree with that.
Thank you. Mary, and then back to Larry.
But we could have a gift. When Scott Carpenter was here last week, he did say if it passed both town meetings and Desi were to move on it relatively quickly, we could see some relief. But I'm with you. We cannot count on it.
Yeah, and that's a lot of stars aligning. Larry, back to you, sir.
Yeah, my, obviously, we should budget conservatively. I remain hopeful that we'll get a break. But to your point, we can't depend on it.
Right.
I agree with that. I was so surprised, health insurance has gone up from our previous discussions. Weren't we talking like 4%, 5%? Now you're saying it's more like 8% or 9%?
So we, two years ago, the health insurance increased at a 0%. This past year, the increase was very slight. And they gave a premium. This past year, the increase was very slight and they gave a premium holiday. So for one month, what that means is for one month, they don't bill you. And so your employees don't pay and the employer doesn't pay. And then as they see their reserves start to dwindle a bit, you know, that's when they're raising rates. But I understand they still have pretty healthy reserves. So I'm hoping that we can stabilize the health insurance increase moving forward and not see the kind of the spikes that maybe you've seen before of 5% and 6% and then 0% and so on and so forth. I think I can help the board if you're troubled with reducing budgets somewhat. I was more aggressive on estimating revenue, but, you know, I I think I I've gotten some pushback, which is fine. It's great. Golf revenues, you know, the rates are have increased, harbors increasing. Not sure what's going to happen with DPW and transfer station. But we could be a little more aggressive on revenues. I'm not saying you're going to get to the 750,000, but you you could get partially there. And then maybe that would ease your thoughts about making those, you know, really tough budget cuts.
I think I, if I have other questions, Michael, they'll be related more to the ARP table because that's kind of plays into this budget discussion of how we're looking. In fact, it's, but it's separated in the agenda, so I'll come back to that.
Well, if the board doesn't mind, we'll move it up. Does the board mind moving up the ARPA discussion into this? We can have a more broad discussion when we get it. But Larry has questions related to the budget and ARPA. Go ahead, Larry, you finish, and then I'll get to Mary and then Don.
Okay, on your ARP funds, just some of the terms I didn't understand. The Office 365, is that related to the, whatever the computer software is? Because you talk about e-permitting. I was lost on there's a budget item for using the tape, open tape for e-permitting, which lost me because that's, you know, that's basically a cable. But doesn't e-permitting suggest there's some data software package at the end of that? Which isn't discussed anywhere. And I was wondering if that is the Office 365 because that's a pretty good number. Is that the tie-in to the, to the, basically, our computerization of of the town?
Well, I wish it did. I wish it was a duplicate, honestly, but it's not. The Towne of Harwich so desperately needs to move to.
19th century?
Technology platform where we can communicate with each other seamlessly. Departments could communicate with you with each other. Phone systems would be tied into Office 365. It's an entire communication, I guess, system where, you know, your public would be able to communicate more efficiently and effectively. And and, you know, the Towne of Harwich has over 200 employees that that had a really difficult time over these past couple of years, meeting with each other, managing teams, you know, driving teams and efficiency and effectiveness. And so this would bring Harwich into 2023.
So the movement to the, I keep having Lexis in my mind, that's not, what do you call the software for the?
Essella?
Essella.
So Essella is being moved to OpenGov.
Okay, and that's the part to that's being, where's that show up in the budget moving to that?
So it would, so that would be part of your technology services for the annual, just it's, so this is a.
So that's paid for in the.
An OpenGov is like a subscription?
Okay.
Okay, so it's an annual subscription. So right now, a grant was awarded to the Towne of Harwich and OpenGov was used for that grant, as you, I'm sure you're aware of that. And it's being implemented right now.
Okay, so it's really, they they work hand in glove then?
Yes.
Of getting the open cape? That discussion was leaving me because I, there had to be something to the open cape and the 365 does that. What, a couple of other terms if I can ask on ARP. The discontinuation project, what's what's that?
So these are water, all water infrastructure product projects that I would be more than happy to bring back to you. The water wastewater superintendent, so that he can explain it all.
Okay, I was just, some of the terms had lost me. But I was mainly concerned about the open cape discussion and that making sense.
And so if I could, it's, so Larry, you're making the same word choice that I made previously. So the software application is OpenGov, that's replacing Essella. Open Cape was a discussion that we were having about potentially expanding broadband. So we're not doing that. So the open that we're talking about is OpenGov for permitting. And Office 365 or, yeah, Office 365, as we listed here, is more on all the other software applications.
Yeah, it was the Office 365 term that threw me for a bit.
Got you, yeah. So and as has been said by many folks, it's an effort to get us into this century and.
That's not what was said.
I know, I was trying not to repeat that particular comment. But it's still the net effect.
And real quick, Carol, the Water Enterprise Fund got their own ARPA funds, didn't they? Did they get any ARPA funds?
No, they they're, they may, there may be infrastructure funds coming down the pike and that's why I just included all design. Just to to set them up with kind of shovel-ready projects that you may consider important as you make decisions. There's $41 million that the county has. The board is aware of that, I want to make sure the public is aware of that. And decisions with regard to how that $41.3 million is going to be distributed have not been made yet. And so you should be hearing from them, I would hope, soon with regard to those decisions.
Thank you. And Carol, the proposal, as I'm reading it, out of the 1.270 million that is available or will be available this budget cycle, we're only looking at spending $304,000 so far.
I'm sorry.
The recommendation is only spend $304,000 year one, roughly?
So for year one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But if you're going to commit to year one, unfortunately, some of the items you're going to commit to outer years as well.
Like the 365?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mary, you were up.
I just, back to the the proposed uses for free cash. And you mentioned we we didn't put anything into stabilization in OPEB. Are you concerned about that? Do you think it's appropriate that we take a year without doing that? What's your feeling on that?
So your operating budget does include $250,000 to support OPEB. And the waste, or excuse me, the Water Enterprise Fund also includes $50,000 to support their portion of OPEB. So you've got $300,000 going into OPEB in FY '23, if this is how you choose to support your budget. It it is a little odd that that you don't support stabilization. The only year that I think that, since I've been here, that you have not done that was the year in which you've used some funds, $574,000. And then the next year, the following year, you replace that with another half a million above and beyond what you used. So it is a little strange.
How much is in stabilization, roughly?
I think $5.5 million. I can get you that. $5,554,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't going to say anything, but Larry brought this subject up. And for Larry's benefit and for Joe's benefit, we have the the most amazing mishmash of licenses for Office and Excel and everything else that Microsoft deploys. Some of them are, you know, 2017, some of them are 2019. Moving to Office 365 stops the whole obsolescence thing. It's a subscription service that has all of Microsoft's programs bundled into it. It never gets old because you got to keep renewing it every year. So it's always going to be the newest version. And it also has the benefit of cloud sharing, which you have to go through Microsoft account to be able to pull off otherwise, which is a real cumbersome thing. So it's a real big advancement in terms of being able to achieve, you know, operational efficiency. No matter where you're coming from, you log in, you can pull your documents. And it, if if anything, COVID proved that we're not set up for that. The second thing is, I feel compelled to say something because I'd say it if we tried to do it anyway. I understand how Carol feels about, you know, pushing the revenue for the, you know, the fee-based things. But I've said this before and I'll say it again. We got to prove that it costs us that much more in order to pull in more, even if we amortize the cost of management and the finance director's time and whatever we want to throw into the bucket. It still has to be based in reality that we spend $100,000 doing this and the fees that we've put out there equal to $100,000. It's not a mechanism to create a profit to be able to offset other losses somewhere else. So I, and I've been a hawk on that all along. You don't do it based on, well, the other three towns do, charge this much, so we're fine. It has to be based on what our costs are to deploy whatever that service is.
Carol, do you remember the percent increase from Monomoy Regional School that they came in with?
2.49.
2.49. And then to Mary's comment, yeah. To Mary's comment about them sharpening their pencil, have they been back with a new pencil or are they?
Can't afford a pencil.
They have not been in touch with myself.
Joe?
So I think the last finance meeting we had, that's what we call it, with the Harwich, Chatham and Monomoy, was two weeks ago. I think our next one is scheduled in two weeks. So that would be our next check-in.
We're going to have to make some decisions pretty quickly. So the quicker they can make their decision and we can get that part of it out of the way, the better. The, Carol, when you talk about being conservative on revenue, do you have a, or can you come back to us with a less conservative model that would show some more money?
Absolutely.
To decrease this percent increase? I don't see how we go into town meeting with a 6.65% increase. Joe, will you, will you just explain to the public the wastewater enterprise, sewer enterprise? So actual fiscal 120, 515, and then for FY '23, that bumps up to 2.4 million. A 357% increase.
Hold up.
I can explain it.
Carol, go ahead.
I can explain this.
Thank you, Carol.
1.8 million of that is wastewater debt. I moved it from the general fund, still supported with tax dollars, a different mechanism. But I wanted, I thought it was important to to be able to segregate and be able to to really understand exactly what was wastewater debt versus all of your other general fund debt to, you know, to repair buildings and to build Sakutaka Harbor and things of that nature. So I made that move for FY '23.
So the big change is the in percentage?
1.8 million.
That's the new debt coming on?
That, it's not all of its new. A lot of it was captured in the enterprise fund, I mean, in the general fund before. It was being paid out of the general funds, being paid by taxes, still going to be paid by taxes. There's no revenue in wastewater. But I wanted to segregate the expenses so they didn't get commingled, continue to be commingled with general fund operations.
Thank you. Joe?
Which I I endorse. I think it's a smart mechanism going forward because it just emphasizes that we will be in the water wastewater business going forward forever. You know, the the phrase that I see here is one I try not to use, but you can now see what a water sewer, water and sewer enterprise looks like for a town that has both. Something that's very common off Cape that is now becoming more common here on Cape Cod. So I think to to put it out that way is just greater transparency that we're now in the water wastewater business.
Thank you, Joe. The capital plan, we've seen a draft. When do we get the presentation when we can really put some thought behind this 3.76 million and what we're going to spend the free cash on?
So that was in my, I think, memo last week as well to the board that that is the next thing that has to happen, meaning the Capital Outlay Committee, Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen need to meet so Capital Outlay can present. I can tell you that the the number that we have, when I say we, I mean the presentations that I've made to them that they've endorsed. The number that you have for fiscal year '23, I believe, remains the same. The wastewater situation, do you remember if that was 23 to, 24 to 23? Dan's request?
Water or wastewater?
I thought it was wastewater, yeah. So there was, there was a request from the wastewater, excuse me, the water wastewater superintendent after the Capital Outlay Committee had voted to to move numbers around. I believe the numbers that we have constitute what Capital Outlay is ready to present. However, first, there needs to be a joint meeting of the three bodies. And then there needs to be a discussion about the rest of the plan. And that is the the outlying four years. Because as you know, with the charter change, there is a question of what constitutes an amendment? Because if there's a change to the plan, it requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. So Capital LA, it stands ready to present in a joint meeting, Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, when we can schedule that, to finalize that and the plan is in place. The bigger question is the plan over the next four years.
Thank you. Joe, why are police cruisers, and I know, I think this has happened in the past, but why are they in in the budget and not in the, or no, that these are in, yeah, that's in the budget?
No, it's.
Not in their capital?
It it's in the budget and it was a conscious decision to, and part of the commitment to public safety, where in years past, it's been operational or it's been capital and it's been cut. So trying to put it directly into the operating budget to say that this is a commitment going forward is one of the reasons why it's there.
Is that the only thing we put into the budget by way of vehicles?
With regard to capital, yes.
Okay. And then on the part-time health inspector to full-time, 50, 59, 60,000 dollars. I know it only kicks the can down the road, but we can use ARPA funds for that, can't we?
In fiscal year '23, we can. We couldn't use it presently.
Okay. I'll say it again, 6.65% is not going to work for me. So I don't know where and what information you want, Joe, and how you want it. But I I I believe the operating part of our budget was only up 1.7%. And I think that that speaks volumes of the department heads and and taking a hit again. And it's again and again and again, whereas the school just consistently comes in with a very high budget and our department heads bleed for it. So I would emphasize in the meeting with the school committee or Dr. Carpenter, that Mary's spot on when she says they have to sharpen their pencil. And I don't want to weaken the school, but I don't see how they come up with the same numbers over and over and over again and think that the town can absorb them and the department heads can absorb their increases. You know, they're operating in a vacuum over there and it's got to stop. Any further questions from the board?
No, no.
And Joe, we're going to do this weekly. Carol will look for the increased revenue. And board, I would say, start putting your suggestions and thoughts together on where we're going to come up with some of this money or reallocate for next week's conversation. I didn't open it up to anyone in the audience, but does anyone in the audience want to speak? I can't believe John's sitting down. Thank you.
There isn't enough time in the meeting.
Thank you. And we're, and we're going to talk about it soon.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, before you move on?
Go ahead.
Just to put out that town meetings in 63 days from today.
That's why this is a weekly event.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're in the silly season now.
We'll do consent agenda.
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda with the following items. A, vote to approve a Caleb Chase Award in the amount of $1,000. Vote to approve a Caleb Chase Award in the amount of $909.64. Vote to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for the following dates. November 2nd, 2020, November 9th, 2020, June 2nd, 2021, and June 7th, 2021, and November 15th, 2021.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to say it again, we're going to get ourselves into trouble here because these minutes don't necessarily reflect how we got to executive session. The very first one has Mr. Ballantyne calling a meeting order at 6:00 PM, beginning with an executive session. It doesn't say who it was who made the motion to go in for that purpose and then say we're going to come back out, which I know occurred. If we want to vote.
If we want to vote on these, that's fine, but that's not really what happened. It was just like you saw tonight, it was a motion, it was clear we're going to come back and the purpose was listed here, but there's no listing of what the vote was.
So, Mary's motion included tightening up the language on the executive session?
Including what the vote is.
And that reflects in the second?
My check it.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
That's fine with me.
And Joe, that's a note for going forward if we can spell that out. Mary, go ahead.
And I had one correction, the minutes, and I emailed this to Ellen, so she's going to take care of it. The minutes for November 9th, 2020, listed the members that were there, and Michael, you were not there, and somewhere on page four, it had you comment on something. So, Ellen said she would fix that.
I have that effect on people. And that's in your motion as well?
That is in my motion as well.
And that's in your second as well?
Yes.
Okay. And Ellen's aware of what she needs to change?
And Ellen knows about it, yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Discussion possible vote to appoint James Mullin Jr. as temporary town clerk. Joe, I'm assuming we did something wrong or I missed a week because I thought we voted this last week?
So, you didn't have the ability to vote it last week because we didn't have Mr. Mullin's name at the time of the publication of the, of your agenda or your packet?
So, good practice.
Correct. So, this is just a belt and suspenders approach because I'll tell you that Jim showed up right on time today and is already making a great impact, even though he's not official until you make this vote and moderator Ford swears him in tomorrow morning.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move that we vote to appoint James Mullin Jr. as temporary town clerk.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you.
Discussion on revolving funds.
Skipping the, oh, we already did this.
Yeah, unless anyone wants to bring ARPA back.
I know.
All good? One second here. Yeah, go ahead. Discussion on revolving funds. And Joe, I will start with you. I know in the pre-budget discussions, Joe, it was, and for years has been talked about, but I do know you asked for a summary of revolving funds. And we're all, we should all be aware of what Selectman Howell has asked for for the last few years, and this is an attempt to get there. Do you want me to have Don open it or do you want to open it?
Well, I'm a little flat-footed having been on vacation for the last week. I should have started out by saying thank you to the board and staff for giving me that time. And I know that we've had ongoing conversations. I'm just not privy as to what the intent of this evening's discussion is.
So, I just want to get to Don's questions on revolving funds. What reoccurring charges are, what reoccurring programs are in these revolving funds and suggestions on tightening them up? And Don, why don't you dive into what your full ask is?
Yeah, it really doesn't boil down, thank you, Mr. Chair, to the ending balance at all. It boils down to funding appropriated programs in large measure through revolving funds, even after you know what your likely funding is, that you're going to need is. If, it was supposed to be, to be able to nimbly respond to a change in circumstance. So, if they added five teams to wrecking youth in the current year, they'd be able to supplementally do that. But it wasn't ever intended to go around the scrutiny of the budget cycle. Where we're at now is, I know I'm satisfied that Carol and Joe were looking at things, but that's not the same as being vetted through a budget process where competitive needs are addressed and we vote consciously to give $150,000 to a program. All that they're really looking for is to say, is this generically what the program is supposed to be doing? So, if there, I don't hate to pick on wrecking youth, but if the needed uniforms and the bills that come through are for uniforms, then that's fine. That's not the same as being scrutinized to see if this is something that you really need this year as opposed to in another year. And we're starting to get really used to this. Just so everybody understands it, we're talking about $1.2 million on revolving fund limits. That's a lot of money that's offline. And I don't know that it was ever constructed to be a kind of shadow budget. It was supposed to augment things you couldn't know and be able to fill that gap so that you could budget it the next year, once you did know it. That's my pitch. It was like, in prudent management, you wouldn't keep doing this this way except for new unknown territory.
Thank you. Joe, is that clear? And if we have to, if we have the information. But I know through the budget process, you asked department heads to justify their revolving funds.
Correct. And as you can see in the, and I hope I'm referring to the same packet materially as you folks, but after the spreadsheet that shows the balances, Carol went out and had Powers and Sullivan do their review, and to me, that sort of certifies that where we are presently with our revolving funds is where we as a town expected to be. So, I, what I would say is going forward, we have two standard articles at every town meeting that deal with revolving funds. First, the language that comports to them and then setting the spending limits. And so, I would urge that if the board's looking to change that, we have time, we're running out of time, but we have time to impact upon an article at town meeting if that's the board's wish. You know, that's my, that's my first reaction to where we're at tonight.
Thank you.
I guess I'm not, I guess my question is to Carol. I guess I don't understand, I hear what Don's saying, that some things, if they, I don't know, let's pick on rec since they're, you know, they've got stuff that you can think about, like basketballs or nets or whatever. Is this saying that any of those purchases aren't in their regular budget, they're all in the revolving? And in fact, wouldn't they know, on average, I need 50 basketballs, I need 20 tennis rackets per year?
So, it depends on where the programs reside. If the programs reside in the revolving fund, so it's a basketball program and it's held, I'm just making this up, on a Saturday, and they know they're going to have 50 children attend and they'll charge them $10 a person, and they know they need basketballs and they need some kind of a shirt, you know, and a whistle or something of that nature. They certainly have the knowledge and information that, that they would know what they need to support that, the enrollment in those programs. And those costs would come out of the revolving fund. The cost for the rec director and, and his full-time staff do not come out of the revolving fund. They're there to support all of the activities of recreation. I'm just using this as an example because I think it's, it's kind of easier to understand. Their, 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 those staff members are necessary to support the overall operations of recreation and not just what's being held in the revolving fund. The part-time folks that work in those programs that are overseeing the youth that are in, let's say, a basketball program do come out of the revolving fund. Their salaries or wages or hourly wages are charged directly to the revolving fund. So, things such as, the community center has a weight room revolving fund. The equipment to support the repair and replacement of that equipment is, would be charged directly to the revolving fund. There's a part-time employee, a part-time position, it's like a weight room attendant or a trainer, that's charged directly to the revol, that revolving fund. And then there's cleaning, there's, you know, particular sanitizing wipes that are charged directly to that fund because they're used in that space only.
I guess I don't understand why, why we have that, why that just couldn't all be part of the regular budget.
Well, it could, some, a lot of it probably could. I mean, this is an extensive amount of revolving funds for a small town like Harwich, honestly. Well, that's just my opinion. So, you know, if you had the ability to plan for your programs, your department heads planned for their programs, they would plan the revenue source and then they would plan the expenses and they could be charged to, you know, could come right out of the operating budget. Now, I'll tell you, if there's a huge surge in pickleball.
As a hypothetical.
As a hypothetical.
That got Johnson.
You know, and that, and that you didn't have the budget to support it, you'd have to hold back on pickleball that year and plan for it in the following year.
Okay.
Follow-up, Don?
Yeah, I was remiss in not saying that. What I really meant was not to curtail this, but this, to a greater and lesser extent, some people could view that as their money. If it was generated and thrown into the general fund, like, fire department's a good example of that. We do a ton of ambulance billings, but it's not, they don't operate in a revolving fund where you just shoot out more runs and we'll get more money. They collect in, it's put in the general fund, and then they put a request in showing kind of a profit and loss statement. Here's what we need to do and here's where the funding source would be. I just want to be able to say to the taxpayers that they're part of this process and they're not in this process. They are, if it's an appropriations process.
Okay.
Julie?
So, if I recall correctly, we had a lot of discussions about the revolving funds when I was on the board previously. And so, there seems to be different dialogue going back and forth because looking at this and you have the different programs, maybe some of them could be into the general fund, but picking on rec again, you know, they, they know what they're going to have, but generally, they don't ever know the definite number, right? And so, this puts their money aside, and I guess if I'm understanding your question, Don, which I think I am because it's been your question for a few years, is you're saying that in addition to the eyes that are already looking at this, you want more eyes on it. Am I getting that still correct?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want the public to be part of the process. And I'm not saying that there's no need at all for any revolving funds anywhere, anytime. What I am saying is that a lot of this stuff is predictable. I mean, the, it should be transparent. Public should see that they got this many people who signed up for this, it came to that amount, they deposited that money, and we appropriated this money for the next year so that they could continue doing what they're doing.
So, so, separate from that, though, if I, again, looking back at the history of it, there's also, there's also the idea that it's not like you don't know if, for example, Eric needed to order a million volleyball nets or something and it was over a certain amount of money, right? You're going to have procurement involved with that, there's going to be more eyes looking at that. So, it's not really like it's just this slush fund. I just wanted to be clear that it's a fund set aside for these various departments. But my thing is, if we're looking at it from a board perspective, if we're hiring people to manage their departments, certainly we should know what monies are in these funds. We also have our finance director overseeing those. I guess my question is, if we're going to split it down further, what is the purpose of that, is what I'm trying to understand?
The public.
But is the public coming to look at?
The rest of the budget is vetted by them at town meeting, always. This thing has exploded in its magnitude. It's over a million dollars now.
So, no, go ahead, Mary, because...
But don't, doesn't, at town meeting, don't we vote?
Just the, just the total number.
Well, that means the public's approving it. I've never heard, I don't recall ever hearing any debate about.
I just...
Can I smash the gal? You're all talking out. Go ahead, Larry. Go ahead, Julie. Follow-up from Julie and I'm going to Larry. And I'm going to go back to Mary.
The only reason I bring this up is, this book is hard enough for us to get through. I really don't know that the public is coming through to say that they want to peel through all of these numbers to vote the number at town meeting. So, I don't want to create more work when there's already plenty of work. There's plenty of work for the departments, there's plenty of work for us. So, if we're going to split hairs down to the budget numbers, we all may have to look at that. But I don't, I don't think anything's being hidden, I guess is my point. And I think that you've got a couple of things going on. You've got people vetting the numbers anyway, in addition to the board, but also you've got procurement, so.
I'm going to skip Larry for a minute and let Don respond.
Fine. If we get, in that point, if that's the way we're going to do it, then I want to see all of the records of exactly what, not in the aggregate, but what was spent in the prior year by each of the revolving funds by item. Because we don't get that.
Larry?
Well, just for the record, I've always been against revolving funds because I think the reason they've come into existence is because they didn't trust us of putting, they've, the feeling was that once they got into the general fund, there was no control and they couldn't fund the programs. But, Don, to your point, and I'll pick on Carol in there because she's sitting there and can give me the EY for the cultural center. But, you know, the, I think they're a good example because I also have seen the discussion in the council on aging. They go into that, at least with a, with a lot of discussion of what their needs are for the, for the upcoming year. So, there are discussions about what, in essence, they create a budget. It may not always be as visible to us as we would like, but they do work on a budget and what their expectations are. The spending itself goes through procurement and through accounting checks all the numbers so we know the money's not wasted, at least. The, I think what you're getting at is, do we need to be sure that we agree with the programs, the direction they're going? And I would suggest that we don't need another bylaw written on that. What we need to do is ask the department heads to give us their summary at the beginning of each year, fiscal year, of the budget items they expect to expend, what programs they're sponsoring. And then the reserve fund does give them some latitude to vary that. If there's more, God forbid, more pickleball, they can cover that and make it happen, right? I think with that minor adjustment, we could get what you're asking, give some direction of what they're doing and make it more public so we know they're not going into programs we don't agree with, for instance, and keep the work down.
Any follow-up, Mary?
No.
So, we're definitely not going to solve this tonight. We're going to bring this back.
I've got a year or so left.
We're going to bring this back as the next step. Joe, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I want to go back to, do you remember when Powers and Sullivan did the report for us?
I think we presented this to the board back in the fall or early fall or late summer?
Thank you. The reason I ask is, if you may recall that discussion, when, when Carol got this information back from Powers and Sullivan and we reviewed it, we noted there, in their report, ahead of their conclusions, they talk about the reporting requirements. Now, they make reference to the fact that there are no reporting requirements within our bylaws. So, we could change that element of the bylaws. But beyond that, they did inform us, and this is something that Carol and I were educated by this report and are now aware of this to take place at town meeting, and that is that Powers and Sullivan confirms under the statute that a board department or officer having control of a departmental revolving fund is required to submit an annual report on the operation of the fund. In a town, this report must be submitted to annual town meeting and the select board. So, that is something that administration and finance became aware of, and that is something that will occur starting at this town meeting. So, we will have that, and maybe that information...
That's the fix I'm looking for.
...goes a long way without changing the bylaw. But again, we typically have two articles that relate to revolving funds in the warrant anyway. So, we have mechanisms in place if we want to do it. So, it may not have to be a heavy lift or, as Selectman Howell has just suggested, by doing the annual report as required going forward, that may be sufficient.
Well, and I would just go back to Don's comment and then Carol's comment, and Julie, I agree with you. I don't want any more work either. I've got 17 minutes available for the next 30 days. But Carol even agrees that it's a high number for a small community. So, at very least, Joe, I think we should look at it. And there's some revolving funds that are very insignificant and I don't think we should spend any time on, and there's not a lot of items in there. But our finance director is telling us that it's a large number. And it hasn't been just Don that has mentioned this over the years. I know Larry has and I know several members of the community have. So, we should take a look at it. And if there's things that should just go into budgets, then they should go into budgets. If there's, the recommendation is no change, but Carol's statement stood out the most out of all this conversation to me. It's a high number for a small community. Joe?
If I could just follow on that, I want to add my voice to that. I, I agree. And it's one of the things I noticed when I came here from a smaller town. That smaller town, I think, had more, but that's a different town. But I can tell you, coming from a much larger town, we didn't have the number. So, for me, my assumption... So, for me, my assumption, which is a bad phrase to use, I know, but my assumption was this was part of the culture and how the town operates generally. That's not an indictment or a compliment, that's meant to just be a statement of fact. So, yes, there are an inordinate number of revolving funds for a town of our size, so then, yes, the board can discuss this as it relates to that article and make, you know, further decisions going forward. You know, in the report from Powers and Sullivan, which, again, I'm going to keep emphasizing, because it was informative for me, having dealt with revolving funds for a number of years, if a revolving fund is repealed, then the overage goes to surplus revenue at the end of the year. So, there's an end result of that, and there's a way to close them out. But I would say, on February 28th of 2022, this is really a new discussion point, we've got 63 days left to go, and less of that when we talk about the warrant, but if we're going to do this, we need to probably do it sooner rather than later, and very affirmatively.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, Carol. Can I get a motion on D?
I move that we vote to approve a 2020 annual common viculars license renewal, Dent Donuts, Doing Business As Duncan Donuts, 175 Route 137.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Don?
There are going to be a lot of people in the community that relieve their back.
I'm one of them.
I speak for all of us.
Larry?
Hi.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don? You're an aye, Don?
Yes, aye.
And I'm an aye. Do the same on E.
I move that we vote to approve a 2022 annual Class II auto license renewal, Good Sons Motor Company, 210 Queen Anne Road.
Second.
Cars, though, just to correct.
Thank you.
Motor cars.
Oh, motor cars, did I miss a word?
You said company.
Yeah, Good Sons Motor Cars.
Sorry, motor cars.
I didn't even catch it.
Still a second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Can I get a motion on F, but only one and two, and three would be a separate motion?
Okay. I move that we vote to approve the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee. First, Mary Ann Kim Pagna, Harwich Assessability Rights Committee, full member, term expires June 30th, 2022. And second, Justin White, Harwich Council on Aging, full member, term expires June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I guess before we make a motion on this next one, I'll explain why I took it out. I don't see how we could make this appointment. And anyone that wished, that saw Sandy McCulerty's interaction with the newly hired town planner at his very first meeting would probably understand why. He attacked his character, he attacked, basically, said he had ethics issues, but he went up one side of him, down the other, in my opinion. He's openly stated in public forums that he, that he's anti-development, and I don't see how we could put a person on a regulatory board that's going to be before builders and developers, that has expressed the sentiment that he has expressed, and the attack that he had on the board at town meeting discussing us doing favors for developers and things passing that shouldn't pass, because that's his opinion. I can't support this, won't support it, and I don't think the board should. Don?
See, now, I don't take it the same way, and my concern is, and has been for years, is to try to create some sort of balance. There wasn't a lot of exposure, because it's the June 30th of this year. If we choose to say that he's not working out, we don't have to reappoint him. But there has always been, at least the appointments that I've been involved with, I've appointed a whole bunch of people I don't agree with, let me be clear about that. It's important to get a diversity of opinion. We brought up that you have to be able to adhere to the state law, you have to be able to listen to the people that are coming in, that were concerned about people's livelihoods and their assets being on the line for what they're asking for. I think it's a bad look on our part if we don't even give somebody a chance. Frankly, we don't, we've got two vacancies there, this is for three months. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. Our exposure to this is minimal.
Just so I'm clear, I voted for a lot of people that I don't agree with, too. This isn't about not agreeing, this is about our department head, whose ethics were attacked at a public meeting.
I was there.
So, this isn't about difference of opinion or anything else. This is about somebody who has, over and over and over again, shown that he can't be neutral, and putting him on a regulatory board, there's plenty of committees that I would vote for, but I think sticking him with a department head that he questioned at the level he questioned with would be irresponsible, this board. Diversity, Don? I agree, 1,000 percent. We should have a very diverse position on all boards, but sticking somebody that attacked a department head and has attacked this board of selectmen because he didn't agree with our opinion, there's a difference between not agreeing and being neutral, and then voting. We do it every week. This is not that, and I'm not sure I care what look the public perceives, because the look that I perceive can be viewed at John Ideman's first meeting on what this person represented, and also, again, at town meeting when he didn't get his way.
Just to be clear, I was in that room, and I didn't take it the same way you did.
Mary, did anyone talk to the planner before making this suggestion?
No.
Okay. Mary?
I'd have to agree with you, Michael. You know, I agree, we want diversity, we want different opinions, and I was happy to see his name there, because he has been argumentative with the board about a lot of things related to wastewater and growth, but I wasn't aware or missed it that he attacked John Ideman. But if that is true, I cannot vote for that.
And I would say that if we just don't put a motion tonight, it can come back on next week. I would ask the board to watch the meeting, and the board to form its own opinion and not take my word at Don's. Attacked may be an aggressive word, but he definitely questioned his ethics, his ability to do the job, and I can, there's a lot of things I can point to. And again, this, I'm not saying it's true, because I believe that it's still pending in court, but the Halls Path thing that we were all involved in, there was assault charges on both parties. One claimed one assaulted him, the other one claimed the other one assaulted him, so that doesn't seem very neutral to me either. Julie?
No, I would agree with that, I think, I think it needs to be tabled, and we'll go back and watch it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can obviously agree with that. Let me just say to Don's point, because we did talk about this after the meeting as well, because we had concerns of his, you know, you want people that, on a regulatory board, to remember that their primary responsibility is to enforce regulations, and we had that discussion, and the feeling was, at least my feeling was, that, and, Michael, to your point, this information about coming out, that was after our meeting, so I want to go back and look at that. But my feeling was that, if you have someone that is, you're disagreement with, it's sometimes better to have them, I'm trying to clean up my language, you want them on the inside looking in rather than, you know what I'm trying to say, rather than on the outside shouting in. And so, we have a good planning board, and it might be educational to him as well. And so, we did have concerns, but also, we felt that, and I felt, if it goes to June 6th, it's a couple months, we can get a read of how he performs. If he doesn't perform in a regulatory matter, then it's over. But I go back and look at the, at the film.
So, does anyone want to make a positive motion, or just agree to bring it back after?
Agreed, bring it back.
Do you know the date of that meeting?
We can get it from, just ask John.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are you looking to have that come back next week?
We'll see, we'll, I'll rely on the interview committee to...
Thank you.
To tell me when to bring it back, but I would implore each board member to speak to John at least, and maybe a member or two of the planning board that was there at that, at that point, and then reflect back to some of the accusations, unfound, unwarranted accusations that have been made about this board accusing us of collusion and whatever else related to East Howard's wastewater, because of a disagreement, non-neutral position. I am, however, next week putting on the agenda for discussion about shrinking the membership of the planning board from seven to five. Certainly no decision, but as a conversation point, and John Ideman will weigh in most likely on a memo, but because we're having a hard time recruiting people, you know, one way to solve that is to go from seven down to five, and it would be a general bylaw change.
Yeah, it's going to town.
The charter already allows for it, but it would be a general bylaw change, so it would have to go to town meeting. But that is on the agenda next week. All right, update on the, from the town administrator on the open engineering and surveying positions, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The topic on the agenda is half-right, and that is to say that the town engineer position is vacant, and we presently rely upon vendor contracts for engineering services. And I would argue that, as it relates to procurement projects and all of that, we've been well-served, and we have funding to do that. The surveyor, the surveyor position in the town, my understanding is that it's not vacant, it has not been funded since 2019, and that was an act by a previous administrator to eliminate the position upon retirement, so I would say that it was probably looking to be a trited, you know, so you have a retirement, you don't fill it, and you don't fund it, the position is still on the, on the books, if you will, it still resides in the collective bargaining agreement, but it is not a position that the town has had coming up on three years now. And so, that is the struggle that I deal with, knowing that I'm hamstrung by the fact that our previous adminis, excuse me, our previous engineer indicated rightfully so that the job is exceedingly difficult without any sort of survey capabilities whatsoever. Now, what was allowed for was $5,000 for survey services. So, my understanding is, is when our previous engineer was hired, the, some of the savings, if you will, went into the salary for that position, I think to make it palatable to the private sector, and I understand that, but it eliminated surveyor, and the additional funds were meant to go for a position of assistant technology director. So, for me, my argument presently is, we're still receiving engineering services as we've been receiving our survey services, and that is by contractor with vendors. That's the long and short of it right now, there is nothing proposed in the fiscal year '23 budget that would change that, but I would argue that if the board wants to go in that direction, we should make those changes, because there is no survey department or position in our operating budget presently, nor has there been since 2019.
Before I open it up to the board, Joe, that one survey quote that we are still looking for the money for was $26,000?
Correct.
Plus what we spent on Bank Street?
Correct.
I think maybe we get the numbers together, what we're spending for surveying services, and what we anticipate to spend, and engineering, and bring that back as a discussion. Certainly, that's not going to help our budget, but, Don?
That part's not lost on me.
That last part is what I was thinking.
I mean, we're spending the money anyway, it's either a position or contract, and I think contract's more money.
And when we, and when we had a good engineer, and certainly, Griff was that, we got our money's worth, we got more than our money's worth.
Mary?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I don't know how to fit it into the budget, but, you know, Affordable Trust is trying to hire surveyors and having a hard time getting them sometimes, where if we had our own, you could just prioritize work for them of what you wanted them to do.
That's what we used to do.
What's that?
That's what we used to do. Julie?
Yeah, I mean, it's a budget issue, obviously, but, I mean, engineers these days are out at least 10 to 12 weeks, and so, we're dealing with that and the cost, so if we can figure out a way, I don't know how we do it, based on what we talked about earlier, but I do think it's a priority.
So, Joe, at some point, we'll discuss what to bring back.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, Michael, I'm going to...
Larry? I'm going to bring Larry in.
Bring me in. I just have to, I guess, repeat what's already been said, but, you know, wastewater issues started to get turned around when we got Griffin Ryder and Dan Pelletier involved, and Griffin was a vital part of that, that input, and so, I don't know how we fit it in, but it's an important position.
We'll bring it back. All right, update status of the Route 28 sidewalk project from Sapporo Tuckett to Harwich Port. Anything on that, Joe?
You skipped H.
H, I do that often. Discussion on tracking short-term rentals. Joe, do you have a...
I'm going to rely very heavily on the memorandum that was produced by the assistant town administrator that's in your packet. However, we did have a discussion before my vacation, and I feel, you know, Megan has captured everything that we've discussed and that we've evaluated on that matter. So, I think it's a solid memorandum, and I can certainly respond to any questions.
Before I get to Mark, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, the, on the short-term rentals, I didn't have an opportunity to say this the last time, but at the Clean Waters Board in Barnstable, there was a presentation by DOR during this past year, and they were confident that they could track all but just the mom-and-pop things, although the mom-and-pops are still subject to filing income tax returns, they also have a program to align that with whether or not they're remitting short-term rental receipts in addition to paying income tax to the state. So, there's a crosswalk that they said that they had implemented this year, recognizing that that was going to become a big issue. But the Airbnbs and everything, they assured us that they'd be going after people, that they would wind up being held to pay, and they have the wherewithal to be able to figure out who it was.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
I know Mark's prepared to speak, but I would just like to open with, I liked his proposal, I forget the name of the company that would do this for us, it was a reasonable price, and it looked like it could benefit us financially, as well as some of the issues with noise during the summer. I just think it's not on the top of the list for this year, I think it needs to come back for next year, and Mark and I had that discussion, so...
Thank you, Mary. Julie?
No, I feel similar to Mary, and the only other thing I would say is that even with that, because Mark's information was great.
Excellent.
And even with that company, though, I think, as Megan outlines, you still need somebody in the town to do the tracking and the work as well as the company, so it's a problem for us budget-wise, so...
Larry?
I'm in agreement with the previous discussion.
Okay. Mark?
Okay, Mark Kelleher, West Harwich. I think the letter that Megan wrote was spot-on. The only exceptions I take to her is the last, second-to-last paragraph about hiring one to two people and having an auto, and I think that goes back to her previous employee. I think in Dennis and Yarmouth, they take the opportunity of these registrations to go out and actually look at the unit, check and make sure it has smoke alarms and things like that. I think for Harwich, the template that Barnstable uses would work very well, we just really want to get names and phone numbers of 650-plus short-term rental owners. And what that does is, if you use the host, they operate, they offer a 24-hour 800 number, so you can, if you publicize it as they did in Barnstable, you call up that 800 number, and they call the owner and say, you know, "We're getting complaints on noise." So, that's my whole motivation for this, it just takes the police out, at least initially, and by getting the 650 people's names and addresses, if you have a trash complaint, you can take care of it. Barnstable, when they used host, they, these companies are unbelievable, they surf Verbo, they surf all these things, they can come up in a day or two, the 650, the short-term rentals in town, with their names and addresses, and they send them out a letter to get them registered, so you get a quick turnaround. And Barnstable has 95% compliance. I did ask Barnstable today, they, by using host, they didn't have to hire anybody additionally, and based upon, say, like, 650 units, it almost pays for itself. You know, the Harwich fee is 50 bucks, you know, you don't have to take everything on the list that host offers, but it looks like 30,000 bucks would cover it, 30,000 bucks from the short-term rental fees for Harwich, and then next year, you have that mass of names, and you don't have to choose as many of, choose as many of the options. And then next year, you have that mass of names and you don't have to choose as many of, uh, uh, choose as many of the options. So going forward, you actually make money. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I was looking, as I looked through your agenda tonight, I could see all the, how much, how the town gets bogged down on all these noise complaints. And this is just an opportunity to not spend much money at all and make money in years going forward, to just relieve the board of all that stuff and at least let this company call up. I, you know, Barnstable and maybe, again, I want to thank Megan. I think she wrote a spot-on letter. But, you know, if she calls up Barnstable, if you check it a little bit more, they're very, very happy and it's been very effective, so that's it. Thanks.
Mark, thank you, and thank you for all the information. I would only disagree with one point, and that's that this board won't hear about noise complaints.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I could, just a couple of comments, um, and tinged with a little bit of sadness, only because, um, as Mr. Kelleher has mentioned, Town of Barnstable, uh, has effectuated this, and that was after years of discussing an ordinance. Um, the sadness comes in, two years ago, Selectman, uh, Stephen Ford, um, had been tracking this issue with the Town of Barnstable and had asked me to look into it, and we had done some vetting at the time. And the, the issues that we came up then are the issues that still relate. The Town of Barnstable isn't just the Town of Barnstable, it's the Town of Barnstable with a city form of government. That is to say that they have a town council, much like Boston and other towns off Cape have a city council. And why that's important is they enact ordinances. And the ordinances that they enact are not reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, because that's just a quirk of the municipal laws. City ordinances are not reviewed by the Attorney General's Office where, um, town bylaws are. So for the Town of Harwich to do this, and I'm not disagreeing that it's, or saying that it's impossible to do, but as Megan has outlined in the memorandum, we would first have to do something with our existing rental bylaw under our general bylaws. And so we haven't taken the initiative on that, which takes many months. Um, certainly not something that we can initiate this evening and hope to have something comprehensive come before town meeting this spring. So I do, I do want to emphasize that it is not simply contacting the Town of Barnstable, because their form of government is radically different from ours. And I would argue that the way that they, um, are constituted is radically different than ours. Having said that, it's not impossible for a town to develop a short-term rental bylaw that could accomplish some of this. But as we saw with the simple ordinance process in Barnstable, it took them about two and a half years. So for us to do this, it, it needs to be a concerted effort that needs to start today with the hope of having something come back to town meeting next year. Not impossible, but not probable, given what has to happen right now for fiscal year twenty-three.
Thank you, Joe. All right, update on the status of the Route twenty-eight sidewalk project.
Uh, at Sacquetucket, so the, the, the short answer on that is, uh, the good news still remains, meaning, um, uh, and I can get information from our DPW director, but I believe it was about this time last year, uh, when Link was informed by the TIPS program that the Town of Harwich's sidewalk project at Sacquetucket and around Sacquetucket was approved, um, by the TIPS program. That's the good news. The better news is we were bumped up, uh, fiscal years. The bad news is we were bumped up to fiscal year twenty-five, which I believe is the soonest we can get in, but that's actually better than what we were looking at, because I think we were projected for fiscal year twenty-seven. So nothing has changed other than we are in the TIPS program, and I believe I'm saying that program correctly, but we've been approved by the regional, uh, approval process. We're simply waiting for that time to occur. So we're tying capital projects and other things as that, um, TIPS process becomes, uh, closer to fruition. So more to come, but nothing to do in the present.
Anything from the board? Larry?
None.
Julie?
No, thanks.
Mary?
No.
Don? Update on OpenGov e-permitting software?
Uh, so again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm going to rely upon the memorandum in the packet. Sorry, just making my notes here. Where you can see, um, we have, as was stated earlier in the discussion, uh, we've made the acquisition of OpenGov, uh, software that was, uh, a lot, that we were able to do based on the grant that we achieved a year ago. Um, but there's still a refractory period between Acela to, to OpenGov. So we are still, um, we're in the final stage of working, uh, transitioning from Acela, uh, to OpenGov. I believe we just had to, uh, finalize the last year. Unfortunately, staff was not aware, uh, present staff was not aware of the deadline with Acela. That was something that I think was presented to a, a former employee several months ago. So we must pay our obligations on Acela, but, uh, that's the bad news. The good news is OpenGov takes the same period of time to come up and running. So we are in the transition phase between the two.
Thank you. Questions, Don?
Nothing other than just mention that Acela has been the bane of our existence almost from the beginning.
Mary?
Can you just give me a ten cents definition? OpenGov, is this for, like, building permits?
So yes, the overall name of it is e-permitting, so electronic permitting. Um, the intent of the grant was to start in the building department, and then as we, uh, get acclimated to it and evaluate, do we want to expand on that to other permitting departments? And there's really no, uh, restriction on where we can go. We can go even to a clerk's office with, uh, permits and fees there. But it's meant to start with building, it's meant to get us away from Acela, and then once we evaluate how, how well it's working and we have high hopes for it, we can expand it.
Thank you.
Julie?
No, I, I just, I'm so glad we're going in this direction, because to Don's point, Acela is the bane of everyone's existence. But this makes permitting, whether, whether or not you're a contractor or a home, you know, it's your own home, everything is so much easier on this and consolidated, so it's a great program. But it does take time, to Megan's point. It takes time to get up and running, familiarize yourself, and there's always glitches initially, so.
Larry?
Yeah, I'll only add to Don's comment too. Acela's been, uh, uh, a disaster, so I can't, it's fantastic that we're moving away from it.
It was one of the first conversations I had when I was brought into town in May of two thousand nineteen, and I thought, well, that's simple, we'll just replace it. So here we are, three years later, replacing it.
Update on the forty-B permit. And, and Joe, I think that's, uh, it's missing something, but really what this was meant to get at was technical assistance for our Board of Appeals with the upcoming, or potential upcoming Board of, uh, Forty-B project on Sisson Road.
So for that, there's, there's actually two levels, uh, of assistance that are available. Um, when this first came up, I reached out to, uh, Amy Questle, uh, and K. P. Law, as our attorneys, who actually would also be involved in any ZBA process, uh, on forty-B. Stands ready to, to advise, uh, ZBA on that process generally, and then specifically, if any, fortyBs, uh, as we contemplate at least one coming into the town. The other resource, though, is from the Mass Housing Partnership, and so, um, once we heard that Chloe's path, uh, was going the route of, uh, a forty-B application, which again, still has not been filed, and Mr. Chairman, I have an update on the, uh, response to that, uh, after this, if you'd like. Um, they offer resources to communities as a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant that they offer that goes with that. So when I reached out to them, what they said is have a follow-up with, uh, appropriate staff. So that would be myself, Megan, John Ideman, uh, and, and Rob Pichorelli to start. But they want us to apply when we are aware that the, uh, application for the Forty-B is imminent. And so we're just trying to time everything together. The next step would be our response to the Mass Housing, uh, program that we, um, had the site visit, uh, several weeks ago. Uh, I'll be presenting that to the board next week. We had a staff meeting on that today. Um, so once we get that comprehensive response back to Mass Housing, uh, which is the financing arm, uh, then we'll have a better sense over the coming weeks as to when the application process may begin here, and that's when we can kick it up. So we can begin with KP Law, uh, if you want now, uh, and I think now that there's been restrictions lifted on meeting in person and masks and all that, it makes it more conducive. The only thing that impacts upon KP Law right now is they're also in town meeting season, so there may be an availability issue. But we have those resources ready to go.
I know the Board of Appeals expressed that their meeting with us, interest in getting some Forty-B training, and I think sooner rather than later. So I think we probably should go the KP Law route and then the technical assistance, but I know that they really want to get brushed up on this another week before the application. Julie?
Yeah, I, I actually, I'm their liaison, so I attended their meeting last week, and they really, they are looking for it. They're looking for any kind of help they can get, any training, and the sooner the better is.
Sure, I can contact Amy tomorrow and have her work with David on, uh, setting up timeframes.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last several appointments we made to the ZBA, we made that point, it was actually a quid pro quo. If you're going to do this, understand that it's not just finding, whether it is a hardship, uh, for this class of people over here. It has to do with looking at FortyBs. They have been, uh, they had made available and, you know, several of them went to the, uh, you know, those housing, uh, forms, but that's not really the same. I mean, and i- i- if we're asking them to go all in on understanding what their obligations are in state law, it'd be really nice for us to give them some help too.
Definitely, yeah. Uh, we, we did the.
Right.
Train, the housing, but was nothing of what you would need for.
Yeah, the Housing Institute is just the barest minimum, but Larry's heard that conversation happen in the interviews. It's like, you know, half, the other half of your job would be.
No, that's good.
Larry?
Nothing to add.
Mary?
No, I'll sit.
All right. We're on to old business discussion, review proposals for Sacquetucket Harbor Snack Shack. I think you all sent all the information. And, well. Joe, do you want to kick this one off?
Um, certainly, again, um, I will rely upon, uh, Megan's memorandum in the packet. However, um, when the proposals came in, um, it was prior to vacation, I had an opportunity to review, um, the proposals and evaluate them based on our criteria, uh, and I would say that, um, the proposer, um, known as, uh, let me see here, B-CAP LLC, uh, doing business as Poco NYC, um, was highly satisfactory in all categories and a price proposal, uh, that was, uh, the best of both received.
Thank you. Open it up to the board, and I'll start with Larry.
Yeah, I know I was, uh, I'm biased because I was wishing for, uh, Pete, but it's, you know, the, the ratings were the same and the, uh, as a town, Selectman, I, I think we have to take the best financial offer, unfortunately. We're fortunate for the town, so, uh, thank you for the information.
Hang on one second, Pete. I'm going to go to the board first and then the public. Julie?
Oh, I would, I would echo what Larry said as well.
Mary?
Likewise, I was disappointed that it wasn't a local.
And Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my frustration goes a little bit further, because to be honest with you, I don't think either of these proposals is coming anywhere near close to what the value of, uh, the seasonal thing is, and I'm concerned about making a three-year award that has, uh, a renewal, uh, for the contract too, and we don't even know what the competitive environment's going to be. In a perfect world, since we have a large bond that we're paying off for the land side, uh, it would be really nice to maximize the value of that, that concession. And get it, I believe the original offer last year started out at a, a much higher figure, and we negotiated it down because we couldn't get our act together to get the equipment released and to be able to let the lease. Uh, so by the time, uh, we actually went and said, okay, let's start this, the, the, our future was behind us. Uh, everything was already passed, the season had pretty much, uh, the profitable part of it was already done. I'm just concerned about voting for any proposal, uh, that we've got in front of us, because they're really low value, uh, compared to what I think it's worth. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Go ahead. State your name for the record.
Uh, Peter Claus from Jake Runes, and I didn't know about Don's statement, but I totally agree with him. We voted twenty-five, we offered twenty-five thousand last year, uh, which is way higher than anybody is even talking about right now, and that's somewhat near what it's worth. It's a, it's a goldmine down there, and it should be utilized better than what it's going to be. Uh, but I came to, to say that I'm confused and disappointed. I'm confused by how Megan mentioned last week that we were advantageous. The other people on an unknown quantity from New York, and I know New York is probably just like Harwich, but, uh, they were, they were rated higher than we were. How could that possibly be? We've been twenty-seven years as a great operation in this town. Uh, we met a lot of criteria to get there, and, and these people can write up a nice business. I'm sure they're really nice people, they could probably put a good business proposal together and may have done that, but I just don't know how. We could have been rated less than them, and, and they could have even been as, as close to us as they were. Uh, I just wonder how that happened.
I'll only speak to what I know about it, and I don't think it's personal. I don't think, um, they were highly satisfactory and you were just satisfactory. I think it was based on the criteria of the RFP that was put into the paper, and the RFP included several things. So I will let the Chief Procurement Officer speak to, speak to that.
Sure. Um, as you can see in Megan's, uh, memorandum, when we reviewed it, both, uh, respondents were highly satisfactory. The high bidder was highly satisfactory in the last category, which was the bid. And there's a significant delta between what they're offering, uh, in their price proposal and what the, um, former conveyor offered.
Thank you, Joe. My comments, I, I tend to agree with Don, um, but John Rendon probably killed me for holding this up. I don't think either bid was a good bid. I think that that's not nearly enough money for the town for the facility that we built. The flip side of that is, is, um, not going with either bid and then going back out to bid and then maybe getting somebody, maybe not getting somebody, or maybe ending up in the same place. Joe, you, you have the ability to negotiate from this. Has that taken place yet, based on board comments? Obviously, we're not set up to vote this tonight, because the way the agenda was written, but, I mean, we don't have to vote it, because it's a contract that you can sign. But can you negotiate from this?
So I think the way that the RFP goes, I'm the chief procurement officer, but the board would be awarding, uh, the license agreement, um, for use of town property and all of that. Um, I'm, I'm authorized to negotiate, but that would be with a successful bidder.
Of course. Is, is the, is this a three-year license agreement with a extension?
So the extension is the town's option. So if you think of it like a sports contract, uh, the town has three years with the right to extend if the town wants to.
I'll tell you, John Rendon took a beating for his RFP that he put out on this building year one, and, and he was smart in putting a twenty-five-thousand-dollar minimum number in there, uh, because we got what the building was worth, and I'd just remind the board, we just bought all that equipment from the past owner. So we are, we are, this is strictly going to be a service to the community, not something that we're going to recapture any of our money on. Joe, what we purchased, I, I guess, let me rephrase that. Are the utilities included in this number like it was at Cranberry Valley Golf Course?
I, I don't know affirmatively, I'd have to rely upon the documents. I can get back on that one.
So that's an important number to me, because I know at the golf course, we figured out that the utilities, uh, the rent covered exactly what the utilities were.
Right.
So, and if that's where the board wants to go with it, then that's where the board wants to go with it. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And speaking of not reading into this, this isn't a criticism, it's truly a question. Did we, because there's, I can't find it in, in either of these packages. Uh, did we try to go out, as I had asked originally, for an alternate aggregate bid prospect where somebody bid, uh, on the two locations and that was advantageous to us, we could take, even if it was a little bit less on one of them, we could take the one that was overall advantageous to us as, as a, an aggregate, as an aggregate award?
So I believe we advertised them, uh, both and gave notice that they were both available. We did not have any takers on both.
But that, that's a separate award structure. I mean, there, there is an alternate a- a- aggregate bid award that's potentially possible. So we just put them out as separate standalones?
No, the town made, well, they, they, they have to be, because they're separate locations and at the time had different operators. So the town put out notice that we have two proposals of similar nature at different locations going out, and anyone was encouraged to apply for one, both, or the other.
Okay, thanks.
Julie?
I, I do remember reading that language in the RFP. So I'm just sort of backing my way into this, is that I agree, a minimum bid would be great for the next time, but time is of the essence with this, because the liquor license and all that, that Megan mentioned last week, that we need to move on this. But the other thing, I guess, is go, taking this for what it is, the three-year, looking at what the monies come in, right, each year, and then looking at those revenues and how to determine twenty-five or maybe it's higher, right? So you can't, this all got off to kind right? So you can't, this all got off to kind of a rocky start. We had a couple of years, what was it, one good, solid year, and then unfortunately, the passing, and then, you know, you took on, and of course, it was later, and so you didn't get a lot of a chance to establish that.
Without a liquor license, and couldn't even sell water.
Exactly. So I get it. It's been, it's been a weird start. So, but I do think it's a, it's a really great asset of the town's, and I think we need to get going on it, just get running on it, have hopefully a good span where we can really judge what we can demand for rent, looking at the revenues that come in. But I do think John's keeping the minimum 25,000, I think that was smart. And I do think that we need to take action on this in order to move it along. Otherwise, we're gonna be up against the same liquor license issues again.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not proposing, I go to the mat for this or anything. What I am saying is, would that mess around too much with the scope if we try to negotiate in terms of a one-year rather than a three-year?
Yes. We, this was actively advertised as a three-year with a town option.
Okay. It's just unfortunate. I really hate to get committed for three years, because I understand the percentage of the register receipts, but they're not guaranteed. Maybe John was on to something of specifying a minimum amount.
So this needs to come back onto the agenda next week, 'cause there's no language on here to vote it tonight, anyway.
And when are we going out for the golf course?
That's back out already.
I didn't hear that.
The RFP's back out on the golf course already.
Correct. When does that close?
I'd have to check with Megan.
Okay.
Well, if the powers that be...
No pun intended.
I'm sorry. I had to go there. If, if, if there was a consideration for putting the package together, we'd be very interested. And as I stated last week, we did not, we declined to go after the golf course out of respect for another operator that I thought was gonna go with it. But we would like to take on both projects, and I think we would make the town very happy with, with the amount of money we could bring in for the, for the town.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Town Administrators' Report?
Michael, I just have one question.
Go ahead, Larry.
Move on.
One's yelling at me. Gavin.
No, it's an easy one. How do we keep track of the revenues coming in to the restaurants or so? When it gets above the trigger level, you know, they've, their commitment's 4% above that. Do we?
So, yeah, they have, they have an obligation on reporting requirements.
Electronic register.
Okay.
Mary?
I just wanted to make sure that you do know that's out, so that you can bid on it now, the, the golf course?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
Yes, I wanted there to be a pause from the discussion, just to put out there to Peter, Katie, and Ward. And please let Ward know that I remembered it was Ward, but I almost said Hugh Beaumont, which is the actor who played Ward. He'll get that reference. But Peter, Katie, and Ward have been a delight to work with, from, from last year's process to the season that we finally got underway, and in this process here. And so I wanna just emphasize that there are criteria that are required under 30B that we rely upon, but I have the right to say that they've been good partners in the town. And so the, the criteria does not take that into consideration, and I would hope it isn't taken as a slight, because they run a great operation, and I know they've got another place in town. And as board members said, 'cause I can't, we have another RFP that's out there, so we're looking for good purveyors. But I do appreciate your efforts, and please give my regards to Ward, and thank you.
Town Administrators' Report?
I'm back from vacation. Thank you for the time off. I have nothing else to report.
Selectmen's Report. Selectmen's Report. Larry?
Nothing.
Julie?
Nothing.
Mary?
Nothing.
Don?
Nope.
So on the 14th, we're gonna have the Powers and Sullivan report that we talked about tonight. They're coming to present that to the board with recommendations, and so they're gonna give us the, the overall report.
You talking the revolving fund?
No, in general, financial report for the Town of Harwich and the annual audit.
The annual audit.
Annual audit. So they're coming then, and next week, we will have the LCP discussion and picking a date to do the interviews, so that we can get that started, as well as the conversation about the planning board membership, amongst many other things, I'm sure.
The comprehensive response to Mass Housing on the Chloe's Path will be next week as well.
Motion to adjourn? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
I just said it.
Don said it. Julie seconded it.
I did.
Roll call, Don.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Larry. Julie. I'm an I.